The time is 6:35 PM. I would now call the July 17, 2024, meeting of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for the continuing opportunities you have given us to serve in this community that we love. Lord, we pray that you bless this council, open our hearts and our minds, give us wisdom and empathy so that thy will may be done. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I will take the roll call. We do have nine counselors, eight present and one on stream. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Copies of the agenda are located in the back of the meeting room. Also, for any citizens wishing to speak under citizens' comments later in the agenda, please sign in using the signing sheet located in the back of the room. We will now have any comments from council members and special recognitions.
Madam President, I have one. I have one of my constituents, Ms. Angela, send me an email regarding the speeding going down 56th Street, and she was wondering if we could have additional police presence on 56th Street to enforce the speeding. That's it.
Madam President.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Counselor.
On July 7, Canine Justice of the Lawrence Police Department felt critically ill with a condition known as bloat. Despite the best efforts of his handler, Sergeant Bishop, and the VCA Beach Grove Animal Hospital, Canine Justice had come to the illness and passed away. Canine Justice was a dedicated member of our police force since August 2020, serving loyally alongside his handler, Sergeant Bishop. To honor his service and to support our police family during this difficult time, I request that we please hold a moment of silence.
Thank you, Counselor Kramer. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, unfortunately, I'm so sad to report this, but we're having an ongoing problem at 46th and Shalen where the Walgreens has been vacant. I'm getting tremendous, several complaints from citizens with pictures about the trash that is going on. I think it's going to be a reoccurring dumping site, and so I would like to encourage DPW to make that something that they just check, unfortunately, on a weekly basis so that we don't have see any more blight in our community and something to worry about. Another significant issue that came up in the last council meeting, and I have pictures to show to validate the words I say. I warned the city, and I was very adamant about our new heavy trash deal. I sponsored the trash bill, but I warned that the trash arrangement was not going to be enough and that we would start to have trash leaving in our neighborhood, and that is exactly what has occurred. And so, as my constituent, look at her picture, eyesore, and being someone in this community of 10 years, I just feel like, again, this is not to toot my own horn, but because many of us know our communities, I got my finger on the pulse and I knew this was going to occur, and within a week's time, you know, there it is. So I don't know what we're going to do to keep that from occurring, but I will present that, and I have told my constituents that, and I'm getting these things from Facebook, and I told them that I would address this with the city administration, DPW. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam President. Counselor? Yes.
Came to my attention last week, I haven't been able to follow up, that it actually has happened. Where the old Marsh Grocery Store is, the gentleman that owns that property has told me they're having a soft opening. Not quite sure what that means, but for the city farmer's market, which will be the new grocery store that he is putting in, in that little strip mall where Marsh was, he said that they'll be followed up with a full opening within the next 30 days. So if you get a chance to go by there, stop in. We've been anxiously awaiting this grocery store for almost three years or so, so looking really forward to this addition to the community in that area because it's really well needed. The other thing I'd like to add is to our DPW people. At 46th and Van Cleve, there is a old home that the gentleman that used to live there was ordered to leave because the house was completely, was literally falling down. And the siding on this house is asbestos, and I spoke with the gentleman, that was the former owner, and he tells me that there is a lien on the property, which is one of the reasons why he vacated. But my understanding by the two, the lien holder and the gentleman that used to live there, they want to just sign off and be rid of this property. So if that's something that DPW can handle and getting this done with the legal people, this really needs to be something done with this house. As it deteriorates and pieces of it fall to the ground, it's, these asbestos shingles are shattering, and it's polluting, you know, it's polluting the atmosphere in the neighborhood. So I would definitely urge the DPW to take some action on this. Thank you.
I have one more, too. I'm sorry, one more.
Thank you, Counselor Wells.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was also, another email sent from a constituent, I just want to make sure I slip my mind. Wallingwood, on Wallingwood Drive, we had had some conversation about getting some signage and some new signs there, and that has not, from what I got an email, that that has not happened yet, and so I want to also make that mention as well. Thank you.
Madam President, one more thing, I almost forgot.
Yes.
I had spoken to the administration, Mr. Lovell, I think in particular, about what has happened with our lobbyists and what have they accomplished in the six months that we have been paying them. If you could, during administration comments, give us some insight on what has happened with them, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Is that Marsh by Cogina's? Is that Marsh you're talking about by Cogina's?
My what?
Marsh you're talking about by Cogina's?
Uh, to 52nd Franklin Road.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of July 1, 2024. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for July 1, 2024?
Madam President, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor Freeman. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Wells. Any further discussion? Okay. We will now take a vote. I will have to do a roll call. Counselor Giles?
Aye. Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robinson, yes. Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Crone?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. We have unanimous, thank you. Next, we will have... Next, we will have the approval of vouchers, signing of the vouchers, and approval of claims and authorization of payment. Do we have a motion to approve the approval of claims and authorization of payments?
So move.
Thank you, Counselor Jennings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion? We will now proceed to a vote. I will do a roll call. Counselor Giles?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robinson, yes. Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Crone?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we will have the reports of committees. Counselor Wells, I understand the Code and Rules Committee met this evening. Are you prepared to give a report?
Yes, Madam President. We met today, and Proposal Number Nine was voted on by the committee to be recommended to the full council for approval, and Proposal Number 10...
Assist to the Nine.
...of 2024, there was no recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wells. The next agenda item is unfinished business, Proposal Nine, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the proposal into the record? Number Nine.
Proposal Number Nine, 2024, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to Establish Always-Stop Intersections at Highview Court and Winding Creek Place, Pine Grove Court and Winding Creek Drive, and Westwood Circle and Winding Creek Place.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This proposal was introduced at our June 26, 2024, meeting. The Code Rules Committee met this evening and has recommended a favorable recommendation for Proposal Nine, 2024. Do councilors have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion for Proposal Nine, 2024?
Madam President, I move that we approve Proposal Nine.
Thank you, Counselor Kramer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Jennings. Any further discussion? Let's move for a vote. Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kramer?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robinson, yes. Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Crone?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we will have, on the unfinished business, Proposal Number 10, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of this proposal into the record?
Proposal Number 10, 2024, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Adopting a Special Events Code.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This proposal was introduced at our June 26, 2024, meeting. The Code Rules and Committee met this evening and has recommended, no recommendation, for Proposal 10, 2024. I also understand that the proposal was amended by the committee and is recommended to the council this evening as amended. Do we have any questions or comments?
Madam President, I have a question, if I could, for the Department of Public Works. So as I was reading through, I see that the council has final say in the appeal process or if a permanent application is denied or revoked. Would the council have any authority to, say, veto if someone was approved and we didn't feel like, as a council, that it was in the best interest of the city?
You have the overarching authority, and that's in your purview, of course. That was specifically designated for administrative purposes of determining whether or not an event was special or special permit was required or if an event didn't require a special permit. But yes, you have the overarching authority.
Gotcha. And then, follow-up question, the fees that are associated, are those predetermined to go to any sort of line, like payment that they would be used for?
Great question. So those fees, and I neglected to ask, to answer that or to state that earlier, Counsel, but those go back into the general fund and not DPW-specific. So this isn't a revenue generating machine or revenue generating ordinance that we're trying to introduce, so it'll go back to the general fund.
Any further discussion or comments?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Counselor.
What was the amendment that the committee recommended?
Oh.
You wanted to talk about that?
Deputy?
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Chavis, for that question. If I may, there was a series of amendments, most of them recommend moving the minimum recommendation of submitting an application from 90 days to 45 days when to apply for a special event. There was a couple of other language removals and iterations that were made, particularly Section 4-2-11-7. At the end of that paragraph, removed some wording that was relevant about the submission of the application that was no longer, essentially was redundant. Additionally, most of the timeframe from 90 days went down to 45 days. I believe most of the councilors got that amendment. Additionally, we also changed the fee requirement as well. So any late application, it was past the 45 days, what's $10 per day, that has been changed to $300. Additionally, the vendor fees went from $50 to $100 for 10 vendors. $100 for events with 100, excuse me, with 11 to 25 vendors go to $200, and then $200 for events with 26 or more vendors went to $300 as well, and a few others, if you don't mind. There was a section in 4-2-11-3, under Subpar 11I, again, that went from 90 days to 45 days, and then additionally, removed the language, especially if the applicant does not receive an approval within 45 days of the proposed event date. That section was removed, again, redundancy. And then additionally, under 4-2-11-2, cost recovery for special events... I'm sorry. Under Section A, the removal of the word "actuals" expense, mainly our concern was the specificity of that, would have been concerned to try to round out that exact number from police and fire to see what that looked like. So we just removed that language to make it more palatable and kind of give the city a little bit more wig of room. And then there was addition, Section 2 was added. The City of Lawrence reserves the right to impose additional fees related to public safety personnel for repeat emergency or non-emergency calls that incur costs related to manpower, vehicle use, and administrative processing in accordance with all of Indiana's laws and regulations of the city. I think, excuse me, I think your council have the exact language, I may have misworded that slightly. The following section, under D, Subpar 1, Council and Reserve recommended some changes about previous neglecters who have used, who applied for the permit, that need to be changed as well. The exact wording, if I remember correctly, should an organizer previously have neglected, those are the two words added, their cleanup or repair's obligation of an issued, excuse me, under an issued permit, and so on and so forth. And then additionally, one of the last edits were made was the administrative fee for applicants submitting, a late applicant for public safety went from $140 to $500. And on the very end of the table, if it's easier for you to view, because I know you're doing this digitally, in the table, under description for the first section, it went from 90 days to 45 days. That base fee remains the same under that. Again, that $50 goes to 100, 100 to 200, 200 to 300, and then the unlawful event administrative fee goes from 140 to 500, and then the final section, the late application fee goes from 45, excuse me, 90 days to 45 days, and then that $10 goes to 300. And I'm sorry, Scott, if I missed something.
I just clarify, the language that Deputy Chief of Staff Lovell referenced was in accordance with any and all laws and regulations in city ordinances, and that was in Section 4211A2.
And again, that just gives, you know, more guardrails for public safety.
Thank you, Deputy Lovell. Any other questions?
Just for transparency, so everyone understands, the primary purpose of this is what, Mr. Lovell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, councilors, and if Madam President will allow me to kind of articulate that again. The primary purpose of this is to allow the city have some framework, some guardrails when there are unregulated events that happen in the city, and that is not for church gatherings or traditional birthday parties. These are potential bad actors that may take place in the city limits, where the city has some mechanisms to recuperate any calls if there's police calls there, police runs, any type of apparatus that may take place, especially if something dangerous or illegal takes place. This gives us the city some mechanism to be notified that these types of events are happening. We're not taking away from traditional birthday parties. This is very similar to what Indianapolis has. We understand that there are going to be events that take place that individuals may not apply for application. There's birthday parties every single day, right? And not every single one of them are going to be celebrated in a way there's over 100 people there. And not everyone's going to call the police. I'm sure this last Fourth of July, there was multiple events that happened, it was a holiday weekend, where there's probably assessed over 100 people. But guess what? You know, DPW wasn't called, police wasn't called, and there was a situation where we felt that the public safety apparatus had to step in. But it's important for us to know that these type of events are happening. On top of that, we'll continue to have our city-sponsored events, where we're working with nonprofits, and we want individuals to have these types of events in our community, and that continue to happen. But this gives more guardrails for the city. You know, this is very similar to the policy we have in place internally, it's just now codifying it, and now there are financial mechanisms attached to that, and of course, this is why we have to come to the fiscal body for that. All the funds that, the fees that are associated with this goes to the general fund, like my colleague mentioned, does not go to any particular department. And Captain Contral can speak on more on the public safety aspect of it, but it's very critical that the council really considers this as a serious proposal. This is a concern certainly by public safety officials, but certainly by DPW. And the whole purpose of this, again, is to ensure that there's public safety and that we hold individuals accountable who come to our city who do bad things, but at the same time praise and recognize organizations who do events and want to continue to grow and thrive here in the City of Lawrence. And many of them already are and have, we get requests for special events pretty around the clock, we have a system that we work out. But again, this will help codify that a little bit more, give us more guardrails to use enforcement mechanisms, but then also to recognize organizations that are doing great things in our city, helping business to our city, help enhance the quality of life of residents here.
Madam Chair, I have an additional question.
Yes, Counselor.
I know early in the committee, we spoke about doing the investigation, party promoter, put the fine on him. Is there any way that the fine could go to the homeowner in like an Airbnb-type situation I'm using? Okay. Would that fine go to, if you couldn't find the flyer or whatever, does the fine go to the homeowner?
In that Airbnb situation, I know that's a very specific one, potentially.
But that's, most of these problems that have been getting the media publicity has not been the over crazy birthday party and Uncle Henry shot somebody, that's domestic violence. It's the Airbnb in the neighborhood that people are renting out, throwing massive parties, cars getting shot, that's what's all on the news. So that's why I keep using the Airbnb, because to me, that's more likely to happen, and it's most likely that the person wouldn't complete a permit, where you're a homeowner, you're having a big block party at the house, you're a decent person, you're going to do that. So I'm concerned about how does this penalty happen kind of in that situation, and are we ready to do that, to put some real teeth behind this?
Right, and using that as a specific case for Airbnb, potentially, and the reason for that is, you know, sometimes these Airbnb homes do market their homes for those type of occasions, or lease outline amenities in their homes that can have facilities type of activities. But that's on case by case, depending on the home, so on and so forth, especially in the Geis area. I know, you know, you have access to the reservoir, and sometimes that is part of the marketing of, as an amenity of that home. I know we're at, you know, just outside of that.
I was about to say, I don't know if there's a house in the City of Lawrence that has access to the lake, so I would just, yeah, scramble it. No, people are renting houses in the hood, I mean, that's one of the marketing thing, right? People buying houses in the regular neighborhood like mine, fixing it up, throwing a hot tub. So my thing is, if I Airbnb my house and I got a hot tub in the back, is that stuff that encourages a party? I just want to make sure all this is clear.
Well, if you'll allow me, I'll say a few words to that, and then not to, I guess this evening would be an inappropriate time to discuss what we're trying to do, because we've, again, Counselor, you're a very wise man, and we understand that. So just so you know, Leandre, myself and the administration have already created public notifications for our renters and our landlords. That specific scenario that you illustrated, the target of that investigation or the target would be the individual person or homeowner who allowed that property to be used in an appropriate way. So if you have someone, for example, who the owner of Airbnb, who by knowledge or lack of knowledge do realize that a party was going on at their place, that they rented out, then they're liable for anybody and everybody who was in there who's causing a ruckus, to this extent that this particular ordinance would reach out and touch that particular homeowner in that particular situation and that you just articulated. So again, you're right in the sense that those unregulated parties appear to be birthed organically by individual people who don't own the home and may not even live in Lawrence community. And that's a concern for us all, and so we're mitigating things. All of these things kind of play, they're interconnected, and there's some interconnection going on, not just, and I'm not speaking, I don't want to speak out of turn here, saying landlord registry, that I mentioned that last time, but all of these things are interwoven, and they're connected. So obviously, we can't throw a whole bunch of ordinances at you at the same time without going and doing our due diligence, but that is in part, we're very aware of that situation.
Kind of follow-up to that, there was a big high-profile right outside the City of Lawrence, the big white house on Fall Creek that was owned by the ballplayer out of Carmel. Okay? They shut that whole thing down, and damn it, from what I understand, almost forced, you know, getting into some homeownership stuff. Is this the ordinance in Indianapolis that did that, or is it something else?
Well, as you, oh, I'm sorry.
Cheryl, you nod your head, so I don't know if you got any information. I was just trying to see what I'm creating. Am I creating something that could shut it down, or is it something already on the books that was used? Or we just, you know what I mean? I want to, you know?
So that situation there, I cannot speak for Indianapolis as far as what they did. However, what they did was they forced them, I believe somebody was actually taken to jail in that ordeal that happened in that house, because it was like the second or third instance.
It was a reoccurring deal.
It was a reoccurring. So I can't answer to what rules, how that was, but back to what the director was saying is for us here, that's where, to answer your question, the homeowner should be, in fact, fined for anything, because they are ultimately responsible for what goes on in their home. So regardless if this is Geis, 46th and Shalen, Emerson, whoever owns a home, lease that out for individuals to come and do for whatever reason.
out for individuals to come and do for whatever reason, just because individuals, just like if you rent a hotel room, you're responsible for what happens in that room. If you leave and you rent it to your kids, it's the same thing. So this ordinance here would, should cover, I just go back to only, I can speak for public safety side, it's more of a notification for us. So that's when it comes in for police and fire, just knowing not to intervene in anyone's events whatsoever. It's just a notification for us. I can't speak on anything as far as like fees or anything like that, I'm just saying on the public safety side.
It's a notification.
It's just a notification. So that way, if resources need to be pulled outside of the city to respond to a big incident, we already know, so we can plan, because we're always behind when things happen.
I got a question though, Cantrell, because you guys are giving me conflicting information. Leandre just said we already have a special event process, and we process them all the time, and we have software, so shouldn't that be a notification to you? I thought the whole deal with this was to be able to put some teeth behind this so that we could recoup the cost when it goes south. So I'm trying to figure out what the purpose of this is.
Yeah, so it, it does give us some more guardrails, and especially when now we're dealing with more money, because right now it's free, there's no process, we just do it internally with all department heads. Now, of course, we're, you know, imposing fees and things like that, so yes, that does.
And then the next part of this that was different than what was stated in the committee meeting was, I asked who would be responsible for the 500. The first response was investigating and promoter. But it seems now that I put the owner homeowner deal-
In that specific case, the homeowner, yes, in that specific-
It seems like the homeowner, because what I'm going to homeowner is, I can rent the place out on third, you know, pay your $500 fine and rent it back out again. You know what I mean? So, but if we put that on the homeowner, then maybe that would stop them from redoing. So I'm just trying to figure out what is our strategy here and how we enforce, and also make sure that we're not duplicating any policies or ordinances that we already have that might be stronger. And I just remember, and then you mentioned that what we have was just like Indianapolis. That's why I brought up Indianapolis, so I assumed that such a high-profile case that was on the TV a couple of years ago, that you would have used that maybe as a case to do your research on, to see what ordinance that they use to make the man lock people up and force them to sell, because that seemed to be more powerful than $500 and chasing down internet kids on the internet, you know what I mean? And you talk about protecting resources. So I'm just, you talk about we got a comprehensive strategy, make it make, I'm just trying to make it all make sense, because I do believe.
Can I intervene and look at 4-2-11-20, Cost Recovery for Special Events, number A2? Does that address the situation? It says, "The city of Lawrence reserves the right to oppose, impose additional costs related to public safety personnel for repeated emergency or non-emergency calls that incur costs related to manpower, vehicle use, and administrative processing."
Potentially, yes. You know, if, if, if there is unnecessary burden to the city, if we are, you know, responding police apparatus, things like that, then, you know, if, if that event that takes place does make it costly for the city, then yes, if, if that individual-
Somebody got hurt, we had to do ambulance runs.
Correct, correct.
Charge them for the ambulance runs.
Correct.
But I'm asking, is the charge going to the property owner or is the charge going to the promoter? That's what I'm, that's-
Yeah, and I think that the, you know, if it was a group of cars happening, it's a lot more difficult to identify, yes, especially if we can identify the organization, if Lawrence Police is able to identify the promoters of that event, to bring this type of event here. And that Airbnb situation, then yes, it's most likely going to be the property owner. And it is sometimes on a case-by-case situation, and that's something that hopefully this gives us somewhat the framework to kind of look at what that looks like.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just- Deputy- Madam President, just one real quick thing. I totally commend what the administration's trying to accomplish here, and I totally understand it. My only issue with it is I think that it's, the verbiage is the problem that I see. I think there's some vagueness to it, and, you know, the, in the committee meeting I heard, same as I just heard just a minute ago, we're trying to rule out the bad actors. Well, I totally understand that, and I commend that, but I think that the, the verbiage of this could be to anybody. It could be to anybody with a birthday party, or church social, or a wedding reception, or, or anything. And, and okay, so maybe the administration isn't going to target those, but it doesn't say that it's not going to target those.
I think, thank you, Counselor, for that statement. I think one of the challenges is, as you know, in, in, in enacting laws, is that if there's too much specificity, you can put yourself, and one can put itself, in a very, very precarious situation. So the intentionality is not to be vague or, or to have any ambiguity, but we don't want to narrowly focus this particular ordinance, because we are thinking in the future. No one, I would never have heard five or 10 years ago what a peel-out or a burnout was, because I know how expensive tires are, nor would I know all of the things that young people do with their, with their personal time. What we want to do as a city and as a division, the DPW, is to ensure that we're thinking of the future events that we may not consider now, and we want to have language in which encompasses that. But the spirit of the ordinance is, as I believe, to be flexible and nimble in the sense that it allows the administrator, meaning whoever the DPW director is at the time, to determine on a case-by-case basis if there were concerns or questions, to be, then be able to address those concerns or questions without having the stringent strict nature of a specific particular ordinance. For example, if we were to say church events regulated at 50 people or more over the age of so and so and so. So when you start narrowly focusing things, it becomes problematic, and then you can't do your jobs in order to determine whether or not you do have bad actors. So I think that's why the language is such. And again, it can be amended, but I think that we would like to establish a framework. And the Counselor mentioned, and if, I will be brief, sir, is that now what we have is an email chain. So we'll get a request for DPW, they'll send in a special request for special permitting, and then DPW will look at it, will, will, will base our decision on have there been issues in the past, and then we'll forward that email on to police. The police will forward it on to fire, fire forwarded on to parks, parks forwarded on the streets, you see? So there hasn't been a standard or guardrail framework by which to operate. And what the ordinance does is gives us that ability and give you guys the ability as a common council to be able to, to go after those individual people who are, who have our, don't have our best interest at heart.
Madam Chair, I got one more question, and this is for our counsel, for our attorney. I just was sitting there thinking, and, and don't hold me, I'm not trying to play lawyer here. But I kind of got a news spark in my mind, and I want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence. Does this affect any covenants to people's home and quiet enjoyment and stuff like that?
That would be something I'd have to look into further, and we'd consult, obviously, with City's Corporation Council as well, so I'd be reluctant to, to speak directly-
But you haven't, to your knowledge, that hasn't been vetted yet.
Right, I don't believe the city administration's looked at any particular covenants from homeowners or any sort of-
Because that was the issue with the tenant, with the tenant, when you bring, when you kind of brought up the landlord-tenant thing, we were threatened by my board to sue us based on covenants.
Well, the Indiana, the Indiana General Assembly has set that landlord registry fee at about $5, I think it is right now, that the law says. I could be wrong, but I think that's what it is currently. And so obviously, we have done, we've done just enough to be dangerous not to push beyond the scope of what-
Right, and I didn't want to mix this with the, with the landlord registry.
Not at all.
I just wanted to just say that at the time, when I sponsored that, I didn't, no one thought about that, and then, I remember, and then when they came, we had to walk, we had to walk, walk away from that, because it wasn't in the best, so I'm just, so now when you, when you spoke of how they took that man's property, it made me think about that level, and I just want to make sure that we're protected.
Those laws, those, those common enjoyment laws are well-established in the Constitution. And so we, this, this ordinance won't directly conflict with the constitutional ability for people to enjoy their homes. I think this is specifically, and I really appreciate these questions, because we've done a lot of fact-finding, but this is particularly and specifically for-
You said it wouldn't, you said it wouldn't affect it, right?
Their constitutional rights.
But my attorney just told me that he wouldn't even speak to it.
Their constitutional rights are never, what we're trying to say is this, is that this does not in any way violate anyone's constitutional rights. This is specifically designated, and I think we're conflating several issues into one. This is specifically dealing with-
I'm just asking if it's been fully vetted, sir. That's, I don't, I'm not saying that it does, I'm just asking that it, has that been, has that been looked into before I vote, just to make sure I'm protected? And typically, we always look to our attorney to say, am I creating any problems with this vote? And so-
Well, the last-
Because I voted and got the city sued before, so I don't-
Well, the last, the last thing I'll say is this, and then we can, we can, we can, we can split hairs later as this, is that if it's the intent of this body to move this piece of ordinance forward, I would recommend that. It can be amended, but I don't see any problems with the way this is, has been constructed. We've actually, through our city attorney, and the process of our consulting and our, and our law firms, they've endorsed this particular, the way we've written this.
Okay, well, that's a good statement to know, I didn't know.
Yeah, and so, and that's what we do, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, so I mean, from the council's perspective, right, this is certainly something that we could look into, and similar to what was described, we would consult the City's Corporation Council, right, and we'd be glad to look into that.
But you're telling me at this point, you're asking me to vote, and the consulting has not occurred?
That's right, we have not looked at that.
That's all I'm trying to get clear. I ain't saying I'm for or against it, I just want to make sure that I'm totally covered.
And I, I don't know if that's the particular practice of this body to consult every piece of ordinance that comes through.
It should be.
Is that the common practice? And, and my, my question would then to you and the body would be, if that's a common practice, then I am all for that, but if that is not, and we're, we're only solely looking at it-
The only reason we pay for these attorneys to be here should be a common practice.
Yes, that's correct, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting, and this is, this is, I'm not trying to split hairs or anything, but if that's a common practice, and nor can I dictate means and methods of how you do your job, but if that's a common practice, then all, I, I will stand behind that, but if it is not, then I would question whether or not the validity of having that statement entered into the record is appropriate for this particular ordinance.
Why rush it too, if we haven't had any significant incidents in the city of Lawrence for three years?
And that's why, so-
So why not just wait and vet it all the way through?
So let me just start by saying this, from an infrastructure DPW standpoint, from our, solely from our lens, my job is to think about not people, not just people's quality of life, but think about events that, that, or think about situations or instances where we can erode the infrastructure of our city. And one of the things that this particular ordinance addresses is people's ability to come in and out of the city, apply for permits at a very, very low cost. Additionally, when there are late fees associated, the late fees in conjunction with the, the fees for the application don't, they don't, they don't impact the particular individual attempting to get those, that special permitting. But my job is simple, and, but it's nuanced. It's to provide people safe, available, and accessible thorough ways, streets, et cetera. And I think when we have individual people who come here with ill intent, or individual people who utilize our open fort as a place to, as a dumping ground, and no pun intended, it's problematic for them, for the residents who've been living here their entire lives, so.
This is far from, this is far from streets. This is about how people can enjoy, use their home.
But it's also-
And, and we got a lot of dumping that's still on the ground.
But it occurs on the street, and if you just, if you recall during committee meetings, we talked about vehicle parking and traffic, that is problematic. The second and third order affected that, it's police and fire.
If it's a church issue or a party, that occurs no matter if it's a good thing or a troublemaker.
Right.
And that's why I brought that up to ask, will it be ruled the same? Because 100 cars for church inconveniences somebody the same as 100 cars for the party, and that is a common, that's why I was saying, instead of saying bad actors or bad intent, I said, where is the dry line? And that's why I asked you, if it was a church event and there was 101 people, because when you talk about bad actors and intent, bad actors is very subjective word.
Well, it's, it's also, so that particular, as I was saying, thank you for bringing that up, is that when you have cars parked on the street, it prohibits fire and police from being able to respond appropriately. And so another mechanism by which we're operating within DPW is to educate our community both up, down, and out. And what that means is that we're going to hold a series of community meetings, et cetera, but I'll let my colleagues speak here, but this particular ordinance deals specifically with attempting to thwart individual people who are coming here to have unauthorized parties, and they don't apply for special permits. The investigatory mechanism, the police are good at their job, they can find those individuals and bring them to a reasonable space, so they can pay those fines and make sure that our community stays vibrant.
All right. Well, why couldn't the verbiage say, anybody that is not a resident or a business owner in the city of Lawrence wanting this permit and imply to someone that's not established here in the city of Lawrence? Would that not be, would that not narrow it down to where we're not, we're not defining churches? I've got an auction house in my neighborhood, they have auctions regularly that I know draw well over 100 people. So is he going to be in violation every time he holds one of his auctions?
He's a business owner.
And he's a business owner.
He's, that's an operating business, and to your point, you know, this, in, in the language, it does say for, to make this as inclusive city, so it does, you know, if you're outside of city limits or if you're inside the city limits, we want people to do events in the city of Lawrence, especially if they enhance the quality of life, they bring business to the city, and that's what we want to do. The thing is, is again, the spirit of this ordinance is to make sure that individuals who want to come and do events in the city of Lawrence, they abide by the public policy rules, public safety rules, and adhere to, make sure the public safety is notified. And so we don't have situations where we're reacting using public resources to situations that get out of hand. They do happen, we hope this will mitigate that and make it less as possible, but it is insurance that, that everyone in the city of Lawrence is taken care of and safe, and we strongly recommend the council move forward with this amended ordinance. Thank you.
Deputy Level, I just want to clarify something in Section 4-2-11-4, B as in boy, number six. To clarify that on the, just the third line down, that it should refer to the city instead of the town.
Repeat that one more time, I apologize.
Okay. Section 4-2-11-4, B6, third line down.
B6, you said?
B6, B6.
Okay.
See, third line down, the word town.
Uh-oh, well, I think we're a city.
Be city, yes, sir.
But, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, those words mean something.
They do, yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Counselor.
Given the, I, I don't know what the rush is, given the number of amendments that were on this ordinance, and the fact that even as we sit here, things are being identified, it is a practice, and has always been a practice for the nine years that I've been on the council, for these things to be vetted out by our legal counsel, our attorney, as well as the city's attorney. If, I'm in full support of this, you know, but it needs to be clear and it needs to be correct. When we are already making statements like, well, we can always go back and amend it, amend it, then that doesn't give me a lot of confidence that, you know, we all feel comfortable. And when I say we all, I mean those of us on the council that have to vote for this tonight. So I, just my comments, so thank you.
And I, I just want to say that Corporation Council, along with the common council's attorney, has reviewed this. I'm, I'm sure there's, you know, some typos here and there, and I understand, I believe this is about 12 or 13-page document, and I understand if, if, if the council has some, you know, want to make sure those amendments are very thorough, and, and that's okay. Ultimately, I think, you know, the council, council is aware that this piece of ordinance is very important for the city to move forward, especially now we're still in summer, there are still events that are taking place this year, and, and, and will be scheduled for the rest of the year. And we understand if, if there are some concerns of- of the year, and we understand if, if there are some concerns about some of the specific language, yes, there are some typos in there, but ultimately, the administration would encourage the council to move forward with, with the most recent amended ordinance.
I understand that, I understand that, but everything can't be a fire drill, okay? And we're almost through with summer, you know, and I just, I don't understand why we rush through things instead of taking the time and doing our due diligence, specifically when things are being brought up in the meeting. That is just my comment, it's not a comment for lack of support, I, I think that it makes sense, and I think that we should do it, I just, you know, we need to do things right, and that's just my perspective and my comment. Thank you.
Madam President, it's to, what Counselor Chavis just said, sort of to my point that I was trying to make earlier, is I'm not against it, I just think the verbiage needs to be tightened up, I think there's a lot of loose ends to it. Administration keeps, I mean, and just for clarification, they keep bringing up this burnout thing with this car club, and, and for the record, that happened three years ago, and it was by a rogue car club that never even asked for permission to use the park, they just did it, and they did it multiple times, and I, like I said, I got pictures of it on my phone, you know, what they, what they did in the middle of Franklin Road out in front of the park, because the neighbors called me, and I called the police, and, you know, we worked and worked and finally got that cleared up, but, so, I mean, I totally agree with what y'all are trying to do, but I just think that it, there's too many loose ends, I mean, if, if, if someone sees that we've passed this, and they have an issue with somebody that has 101 people, they could call, I guess they call the police, and say, "Well, I'm going to get him", and, and use that as a, you know, some kind of way of getting even with their neighbor, or, I just think we need to, as Counselor Chavis said, I think we need to look at this, have the attorneys look at it, we just got these amendments 24 hours ago, and I think we need to review it and, and study on it before we vote on it. Thank you.
Okay, any other statements or just discussions to be had?
No, I would just like the recommendation that it, it remain in or be reassigned to the code committee for one more meeting, that would be my recommendation. I didn't, until Leandre just shared them, I'm sorry, I did not see the amendment, so I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to look over this a little bit more closely myself.
I also would ask that our council be able to give us some comments related to this as well.
Okay.
Madam President, we have, there's not a motion on the floor as to yet to accept this, is, I don't believe, is there?
No, there's not.
So can we make a motion to table it for a further meeting and let the council and the attorneys review it?
A motion to table?
Table it.
Or just send it back to the code?
And send it back to the code meeting.
Send it back to the code committee?
Yeah.
That can be an appropriate motion.
I'd like to make a motion to do that, table it and send it back to code.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Chavis. Now we would take a vote, Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Kramer?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Jennings? Counselor Freeman?
No.
Counselor Crone?
No.
Counselor Massur? May yeses and noes? Three, six?
Three yeses and six noes.
Okay, we have three yeses to table, or send it back to code, and six noes.
Madam President, I would move that we accept proposal number 10.
Just let the record reflect that the first motion to table failed.
Yeah, the first motion failed.
So a secondary motion is now appropriate.
Okay, second motion, Counselor Kramer said?
To approve.
To approve proposal number 10. Counselor Giles?
I'm going to refrain from voting.
Need a second, need a second.
I'll second it.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Massur, and what were you saying, Counselor?
I'm going to, I'm going to abstain for voting on this due to not having enough data to, to approve.
Okay, Counselor?
I'm going to vote no on, but for the same reason, but I'm going to vote no.
Okay, Counselor Chavis?
I'll, I'll be voting no, and, and as I stated before, all I needed was a little time, and I think that that wasn't too much to ask, and, you know, if we're going to be effective as a council, extending common courtesy for information that was received 24 hours ago is a reasonable expectation, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Jennings?
I would have to say, I would have liked to have seen it sent back, but when you, as someone who's done events since 83, things can get out of hand pretty quick, and it seems like a good idea, so I'm going to vote yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Crone?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Massur?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kramer said yes. Okay, it's three?
We have three yeses.
Three noes, and six yeses. So it passes.
You had one abstain.
Abstain, one abstain, yeah.
Six, two, one.
One abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselors. Next on the agenda is new business proposal number 11, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the proposal into the record?
Proposal number 11, 2024, An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting a Seventeenth Supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lawrence, Indiana.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the common council, I am referring proposal number 11, 2024, to the Code and Rules Committee for consideration and recommendation. Next we will have comments of the administration, do we have any comments?
Yes, just a few, Madam President, and I actually want to take this time to address Counselor Wells' questions regarding professional services the city is utilizing.
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
I just, it's, it's... That's okay, just want to address your concerns about professional services we're utilizing on behalf of the city of Lawrence, we utilize the service Creek de Vol and Catalyst, which is not new to the city, it's been utilized by other administrations in the past. Their objective and the scope of work that they're doing on behalf of the city is, in multiple parts, one, enhancing and developing a relationship on the state house, particularly in potentially working to allow the city of Lawrence to have its own zoning authority on top of potentially new grant opportunities the city should apply for or reach out for, for a lot of our road improvement, but also to the economic development we're doing in the city of Lawrence. Part of that is sometimes working and building agreements and municipality agreements with the city of Indianapolis to do some of those, especially in regards, you know, what's Indianapolis, what's, what's Lawrence? And so, a lot of these guys are very smart individuals and lawyers, and have lobbying services to utilize both strategies, and we're doing our best way to do that. But ultimately, the goal is for Lawrence, and I'm pretty sure you're aware of a situation here in Lawrence about zoning authority, is that we have our own zoning authority to do things we want to do here in the city of Lawrence, and that is what we're trying to do forward. There are multiple strategies we can do that, but utilizing this professional service helped move that ball. Thank you.
But they've still not made any inroads to this zoning authority yet?
Yes, it takes time, too.
I have another question.
Actually, I, I do want, before I take off, and make sure that I announce a few city events, and I have Jamie Warwick to announce some of our city events, and Counselor Wells will be happy to talk to you afterwards, thank you.
We do have a few events coming up, in particular, we have a back-to-school cookout coming up on September the 28th, which is...
In July 20, July 20.
Yep, it's July, July the 28th, it's a Sunday, 12 to 3, we will have it at Alexandra Park, and we have sent out an email with a link for Amazon wish list that we would love to fulfill, so that we can pack 400 backpacks for our students here locally. It was sent out to the council and a few other business representatives in the area, so we would love for you all to either join us, we are going to have a pack-back filler party in the hallway, we're going to just back, fill the backpacks and get them out to our children on that Sunday, so we would love for you all to come out. We all, we have also taken over barbecue and blues, and that's going to happen in September the 14th at the cultural campus, so what was once a part of Fort Harrison State Park will actually be a city of Lawrence event, and we will be hosting that at the cultural campus on that same day that they would have in the state park, so it's still September the 14th. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will have comments by citizens, please remember to keep your comments to three minutes. If any citizen wished to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Ian Singleton, and I live at 7746 Winding Creek Drive, and my comments were for the statute you passed earlier, I'm afraid I didn't realize the procedure, it was about the stop signs in Bradford Creek. What that ordinance now does is put three stop signs within 200 yards of each, so you get one stop sign, 90 yards a stop sign, 100 yards a stop sign in the residential area, which I bet there isn't that in the city of Lawrence anywhere, and this is, I don't understand why it was done like that, was it because of citizens' complaints of speeding? I apologize for being late, I didn't realize the procedure.
Hi, my name is Kristi, I'm Counselor Crone.
What? It's a comment?
So, may I say?
It's a comment?
Okay, no, I'll talk to you afterward.
So, I'm sorry.
We're good, though.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you, sir.
That's right.
Daniel Rapp, 5718 Waldenwood Drive. I'd be surprised what I'm going to talk about tonight. Personally, I think you're setting a bad precedence tonight when you approve the three yield signs to stop signs. Two months ago, in McKenzie Community Farm Community, fairly new, you approved a stop sign because people were not, drivers were not obeying the traffic laws. I had been in that area here recently for a community garage sale, and they're still speeding, and the stop sign, they're still running through it. So now you've set up three signs in a geist neighborhood, fairly new neighborhood, and I have very little hope that it's going to solve the problem, and my next saying is, you're going to put up these stop signs, who's going to enforce them? I look, turn back here to a police officer, and I'm going to say, I don't see that many traffic laws being enforced, and in fact, when I'm driving on 56th Street, I am just happy if a yellow school bus doesn't pass me up, or a low officer vehicle, I don't know who's driving it, does not pass me up, because I'm one of the SOBs that set cruise control at 40, and I like to see who is passing me up, especially on 56th Street. Now during the summer, it takes all the fun out of it because the dual-zone district signs are turned off, but when that 25 mile an hour speed zone is up there, I see Lawrence buses speed through there faster than 25, nobody enforces the law. So what are we going to do in two months from now when another community wants stop signs? Approve another six of them? We went from one to three, must be at least six or nine next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp.
Thank you. Mr. Massur?
Good evening, counselors, J.D. Massur, 6203 Carrington Drive, just want to give you a quick update on my favorite topic, which is the dog park. We did get some responsiveness from the Parks Commission Committee last, last week. Chairman Vest went, had a little bit of a confessional about how he sprayed when he was working for the Parks Department when he was like 21 years old and killed some tomato plants, so there is an awareness that spraying chemicals is perhaps not a great idea for the dog park. My sense is there's going to be a meeting tomorrow about this, and by the same token, there was a little bit of pushback from the Parks Department about the idea of curtailing spraying hazardous chemicals, toxic chemicals, and I would, it kind of dawned on me, every week, or every meeting, you approve vouchers. Well, a good way, good way to stop the spraying of toxic chemicals is just not buy them, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for an adjournment?
So moved.
I'll move.
Thank you.